Everybody to start us off. Go ahead. We appreciate you guys. Let's give another round of applause. Thank you. I know everybody was wondering, Charles started doing his hair differently. You will recognize-
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the one, uh, number one Navo High School cross-country state.
Joe?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, please. Excellent. Um, we'll go down to number three, approval of minutes from our last board meeting. Or recognition, I'm sorry, excuse me. Mr. Hyatt?
Sure. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, community and staff and all the others that are here tonight, um, we want to, we are really excited for this evening, um, as we were for the past few meetings where we recognized students for their academic achievement. Uh, behind students' academic achievement, there's a lot of supports in place. And, uh, we are here tonight to recognize, uh, three different groups of, of people. And one is a group of our exemplary teachers in the state of Mexico. They received that award or that, um, classification through the state evaluation system. And so we have several teachers this evening who have excelled in the classroom. And it's not just determined by the principal who evaluates them. It also takes into account the data, uh, the student scores and especially the student growth. And so these are considered by the state and considered by Gallup McKinley County Schools as the top performing teachers in the district. And so we also want to recognize students. We also want to recognize teachers and other staff. Um, and so we will start with that and then I'll make a few comments about our next two groups.
Superintendent, members of the board could join us on the floor for recognition of these individuals. Our first, uh, teacher is Ms. Linda Anderson. Joanna Bonto. Anna Cabato. Gregory Kavanaugh. Marie Chamberlain. Kimberly Esparza. Gail Bout. Irene Fuller. David Gibbons. Peter Ippe. Elizabeth Long. Candace McLean. Anne Mendez. Kelly Morris. Julia Nichols. Lorene Platero. Wendy Sturis. Tony Towery. Carla Zeca. And could all awardees please come back up to the front? We would like a group picture with you in the board so that we can put you on our website.
Could increase by a certain number of per, or points on their school grade. And we set the mark at fifteen. And these two schools exceeded twenty. And so as a result-
Kristen Bischoff. Raini Tria Baijo. Anna Cabato. Edgardo Castro. Stephanie Chapman. Kimberly Corral. Alex Denblicher. Ophelia Dubois. Kelly Furney. Carla Gustio. Linda Herrera. Bernadine Jolie. Patricia Largo. Carla Devorik Lash. Charity Martinez. Amos Naswood. Diana Plummer. Jason Plummer. Rosanna Quiros. Retha Reed. Benny Roenhorn. Laura Rodriguez. Marie Salas. Melissa Salazar. Jeanette Sanchez. Tanya Spencer. Kelly Staff. Shelley Stotler. Theodias Taugh. Beverly Trujillo. Amanda Wanika. And again, if we could get all individuals from Oneonta up to the front so we can take a group picture. Another round of applause for these amazing individuals. For Rayma Elementary, Amanda Quasen. David Quasen. Galen Quasen. Glenda Quasen. Janice Cowboy. Carol Enz. Jaywan Heron. Melinda Herren. Patrice Calastia. Deanna Larson. Boyd Lewis. Ned Lewis. Jamie Lowry. Jeremy Morgan. Nada Natan. Oscar Ontiveros. Flint Titian. Michelle Titian. And again, if I can have these awardees come back up to the front for a group picture. Squeeze in just a little bit. Again, a round of applause for Rayma Elementary.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give one more big round of applause for our teachers. We have some excellent teachers and we appreciate, we really appreciate their efforts.
Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President.
Yes, ma'am.
I just would also like to say, thank you so much, Administration, Mr. Hyatt, Business Office, HR, to continuing to support our teachers. They do so much for us and I know that we're doing what we can in the district to up the wages and provide incentives and I just thank you very much for the recognition today. It was well deserved and I know they're all doing a wonderful job out in our schools and I'm just so thankful to be part of that and continuing to add the positiveness to our district and this was a great honor to be here and seeing all the staff coming out today. So, thank you very much for that, Mr. Hyatt and Administration, and also for ourselves as board members to advocate and continue to request for these kind of incentives for our staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Manuelito. Before we get too much further in our, in our agenda here, I'd like to request a moment of silence for the folks and the tragedy that they're going through up in Aztec, if we could, please. I appreciate your rever, your reverence and I know that the folks up there appreciate our prayers and our thoughts as they're going through this time. We've had one of those in, in our past as well and we certainly appreciated their thoughts and their prayers as we were going through tragedies that we've experienced. Let's go on with our agenda here. Number three, approval of minutes, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to go ahead and approve, to approve the minutes of November 20th, 2017.
With that, Joan, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Number four, approval of consent agenda items, 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, and 4E. Are there any questions about any of the consent items?
I, I do, sir, on the, um, the Impact Aid. Let me double check, make sure that's in our consent, yes. I just wanted to comment it, I appreciate the fact that there were some, a couple of consultation meetings that were done on October 12th and also October 17th and then also that it was debuted and, well, given to and reviewed by the IEC or Internet Education Committee. So, I would really like to thank, be thankful, or thank the individuals that made those changes to our IPP. So, thank you very much for that, sir. With that, I would like to motion to approve the consent item agendas.
Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. With that, let's move into number five, study circle. Public comments. Yes. We have two public comments tonight. We'll start with Mr. Tommy Hawes.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Thank you for the sign. Tonight, I'd like to speak to one of the agenda items later in the agenda with first to middle college, high school. I am a product of Gallup McKinley County Schools as a Gallup High graduate and came back to raise my family here. One of the considerations when we were making, when we were coming back here was we wanted to make sure our children were able to get the education that they deserved and we wanted them to have. And so, I've raised all four of my children who have gone through school systems here in Gallup and my oldest daughter graduated, graduated from Emira High School. She graduated with honors and did very well, scored well on her college, college entrance exams and was accepted to the college of her choice that has high academic standards and we were very pleased with the education she received. The other three of my children have also gone through the Gallup McKinley County School System and has all, also now have entered into the middle college, high school. My middle two children have graduated, both with their associates and their high school diploma from there and because those two children were a little more academically minded and they wanted to lean in and, and get college credits and have those opportunities that were not afforded as easily in, in some of the other school opportunities that they had here in town. And so, so for instance, my son had already maxed out by the 10th grade, all of the math that he could have done in, in high school and so he had an opportunity to, to get a little better leg up towards his desire to be an engineer someday. And so, middle college high fit him very well. My youngest son struggled academically with some, with some learning disabilities and because of that, middle college high has fit him, not because he, of his ability to quickly go through college credits, but because of the one-on-one attentions they have to get in the middle college setting with a smaller staff, smaller class schedules and flexible tutor time opportunities that give him the opportunity there to, to meet the demands he has. As a, as the Chairman of the Greater Gallup Economic Development Corporation, one of the first questions we're asked by corporations that want to come to our community is how, where will I educate my children? We brag on Gallup McKinley County Schools and I tell them that I'm a graduate of it and many of those that are with us are, are part of this system, but they also want opportunities and they want choices and the opportunity that my children had to have a choice in their education and we as parents to be able to guide them in a way that would be able to let them flourish the most came through having the opportunity that, that middle college provided. So, I would encourage the board this, later this evening when the opportunity presents itself to look at opening up the enrollment by the additional 20 students that are on their waiting list to give more students opportunity to have the choice to do this. It doesn't fit for everybody, it's not everybody's bag and, and like I said, my children all went in different directions, but the choice was there and it gave us a great opportunity as parents to make sure our children receive the education that you are working so hard also to provide. And I also wanted to thank each of you as members of this board. It's hard to put your name on a ballot, get out there, get elected and, and try to, to pay attention to what's the most important asset in our community and that's our children that we're raising. So, thank you for what you do and the time that you can ever give them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Our next public comment is from Mr. Olin Kiomi. Did I say that right?
What a diffuse, I get it correct. I appreciate that. Good evening, Yate, uh, Chiquitos, Ananas, Natani, Dahinidi, uh, my leaders. Uh, my name is Olin Kiomi. I sit as the University of New Mexico Gallup Vice President on the local board here in Gallup, New Mexico. Uh, my clans are Topahe, To'be'tadi, Baxishchin, uh, Kia Ani Daseche, Te'nebiri Dase'nele. I'm originally from Tuahachi, New Mexico and I'm here to talk about the one of your agenda items. And recently, we got an introduction and a report from Mr. Hyatt on middle college. So, um, I'm here today, this evening, to support the 20 student increase. The middle college, high school is requesting of you here tonight. As board members, you have, you have and are entrusted with the authority to approve this request and also to provide opportunities for the high school students that wish to enrich, develop, and advance themselves by earning dual credits and eventually graduating with a high school diploma and college degree. As the board may or may not know, middle college, high school has been operating under Gallup McKinley County School District for about 16 years, since 2002. Although, like any other charter school in New Mexico, they have a right to operate, Sumaya's Thomas Lee, according to the state statute, and they have done so exceptionally. Middle College High School reports and statistics have shown great improvement over the years in successfully graduating students with their high school diplomas and college degrees. Currently, they are in extensive wa, there's an extensive waiting lists of ambitious students that are waiting to excel with their academics. In addition, the Navajo Nation is experiencing a high number of professional positions that still remain vacant and an unemployment rate of 60 to 70% on the Navajo Nation. As elected officials, we must look forward to prepare our young generation to be self-sufficient, responsible, and to give back to their people and communities. How long are we going to, going to deny opportunities to our children? These are the very opportunities that you and I never had. These opportunities that are here in the past and here today still seems to be difficult to obtain. On November 14th, Superintendent Mr. Mike Hyatt mentioned to me in a meeting, it's not about us, it's about our students, we serve. And I still hope that's true. In closing, in the earlier parts of my life, I grew up with no electricity and no water. I almost, every individual that has gone through their own trials and tribulations and trying to make it in this world and life, as parents, grandparents, and teachers, we only wish to see our children and students succeed and to be successful in their lives. So, tonight, provide and don't deny an opportunity for 20 more students that, that can become bigger than you and I. I say this respectfully and I'd like to thank you for that opportunity here today for you to allow me to speak on behalf of middle college and also just like to mention that the University of New Mexico Gallup fully supports any initiative that Gallup McKinley County School may have as far as providing additional opportunities for our children. As you guys all know, as far as surrounding communities, uh, communities of the Greater Gallup area, Navajo students or indigenous students are not provided those same opportunities up until now. It's very hard as far as college and so forth, the rise in tuition, the rise in books and fees and college is getting ridiculously too high for some of us students that are not as privileged as most to try to make it and succeed as far as trying to acquire a college degree. This would just allow another opportunity of students to succeed, also to accomplish what they, what they want and seek out as far as what they want to be in life. And I see this not only as money losing, as some financials, passport and so forth, but think of it as an investment. Investing in 20 students that can become greater somebody, something, a profession to come back here to Gallup and our surrounding communities on the Navajo Nation. So, as you guys can see and hear, hopefully throughout the newspapers and news, that we need to provide a little bit better opportunities for our children and our students. So, I appreciate that very much and my leaders here today.
Thank you, Mr. Kiomi, I appreciate your public comments as well. We're gonna go on into the report section B and turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, I'm gonna adjust my comments a little bit due to the public comments. I'll address those at the end because I think this is an important topic to discuss and I think appropriate and correct information and the reason behind things and the kind of more of a global perspective of what's happening in our county should be expressed to the public. I've been on the radio many times talking about this topic. As Mr. Kiomi mentioned, I also went to the UNM Board Meeting to discuss more opportunities and how we can base our decisions off of choice, true choice in our county. Before I talk about that though, I want to talk a little bit about Aztec, New Mexico and the tragedy that happened there. And I bring this up only to express to you and the public because I've received many comments regarding this incident and we've also put a lot of thought into the state of our safety for our students in, in our district. Unfortunately, these things happen in the world and we need to be as prepared as possible to deal with potential threats to our students in all kinds of forms and fa, in different fashion. So, I wanted to reassure the school board and the community that we do keep up to date safety plans, evacuation plans, lockdown procedures for different types of situations and make sure that our staff and students are trained on those. We recognize that we can always do a better job in this area and it's a continual learning process. As best practices change, we try to stay on the cutting edge of those best practices in ensuring our students are safe. And so, these safety plans and these evacuation and lockdown procedures do change. We do keep them confidential. I do have a copy of one here along with our lockdown and evacuation procedures because if it were to be publicized, it lets people that might threaten our students know what we do in the event that we have that threat. And so, one of the things that I heard from Aztec and the superintendent, they had just practiced not too long ago what to do in a, in a lockdown procedure such as this. And so, we are, we have a principals meeting tomorrow. We do this every year. We expect principals to drill every year, not only fire drills and other kinds of drills and lockdowns. And so, we are gonna go over it again just because of the nature of what happened and there's always something to learn unfortunately from each tragic event. And so, I wanted to let the board know that we will review these again and we do this every year, but we're gonna do it more often this year just to reassure that our staff and our students are as prepared as possible to deal with any type of a situation like this.
Mr. Mortensen?
Mr. Hyatt, I appreciate that and I know this has been a topic that I know is very sensitive and I know it's very hard to talk about. But I think with it being so close at home, to our homes, affecting our own families, our own relatives, um, north of here, I just really would like to encourage that this not just be an annual, um, drill, thank you, um, this should be practiced more than just annually and I think that with the, the known threats and like I said, it being so close to home, our, our children and our staff need to be prepared. And I, I know there's individuals out there that have a hard time talking about the what-ifs and Do'Jenina, Do'Bayatiskita, um, those kind of negative things in our culture. the what-ifs and dojaniina, doobayajskita, um, those kinda negative things in our culture. But I think when it comes to the safety of our children and how they can protect themselves, just like buying, um, insurances for our vehicle or practicing the bus drill, fire bus drills, or just a regular fire drills, this is something that needs to be done, uh, more often than just yearly or just being discussed. I think, um, we need to continue to help our children and guide them, and I'm glad that you are having a principals' meeting on this. But I hope that, that principals' meeting, that it trickles down to the staff and to our students. It just kinda gets caught up at that level, at the principalship, and it doesn't go down. And the question that I have is how are they reporting back to you, sir, your principals, your staff? How are they, how are they showing the accountability and the transparency, um, for us to see that these drills are being performed? Um, is it a sign-off? Is it, uh, I don't know? What is it to where that the we can be reassured that this is, these drills are being conducted, sir?
Mr. Vice President, Mrs. Manuelito, there is an expected, there's a process in order to report when drills happen. We receive those regularly. They go to the maintenance department. And so, those are where we keep those, those files and those documents. But, as in many school districts, there's all, we can always do more, we can do a better job. And so, tomorrow wasn't the first time we've gone over our safety plans and, uh, retrained. Again, we do that every year. It's also expected that the drills happen multiple times during the year. Again, along with fire drills happen even more often. And so, that, that answered your question. Any other questions? I'll move on to the next topic. Um, I just wanted to let the Board know also that as we continually try to build our educational leaders in our district, specifically our principals and other support administration, we had, in the past, many years ago, used to have mid-year reviews with our principals. And this year, we are having mid-year reviews again and making that a part of our, our practice in order to make sure that we improve. And I just wanna let you know that we have currently scheduled this whole entire week to meet with principals to talk about not only the good things that are happening in their schools, ways in which we can come better, and making sure that we have a pulse on the education that's happening within the schools. We are a very large district, as you know. And so, one of the things that we need to do to continually improve is make sure that the administration at Central Office is very engaged in the learning that's happening in the schools, not only through visiting those schools and participating in classroom walkthroughs, but giving principals an opportunity to report out and talk about the things they need more support in, things that are going well, things that are not going so well, to give us an opportunity to provide better supports. And then the last topic, we just had two public comments regarding Middle College High School and an increase in enrollment. And so, I wanna talk a little bit about that. This is, uh, an important topic to me. And I think the two words that stood out to me that were mentioned tonight by both people that spoke, Mr. Hawes and Mr. Kiomi, is opportunities and choice. And I think that is absolutely what we need to provide our students, families, and all people to have up in the educational system, K through 12, those opportunities. And that's where the concern comes in currently, and that's why this is a topic of discussion. I also think that's why, part of the reason why it was denied last year and increased the number of students is because of these two words. I specifically want, went and talked again, as I mentioned, to the UNM Board because I saw it on their agenda. And so, I appreciate when people come here and express their opinions also about the topic. But I wanna kinda give you a, a little different perspective that you may not have heard. And this is a concern to our district because we want all students to have an opportunity and a choice. And I will admit that Gallup McKinley County Schools for many years did not provide enough opportunities for students, and that's why Middle College came about many years ago. Uh, last year, during the discussion, when this topic was discussed regarding increasing enrollment, and the year before, I think it was increased by 30, from 70 to 100. One of the glaring things that really stood out to many of us that I believe has been a problem for years with Middle College High School. And I don't wanna not acknowledge all the great things. I have a son that goes to Middle College. I have a daughter who did not want to but was accepted. There are students in our community who don't have that opportunity for various reasons. And so, I wanna read a couple statistics to you regarding the ethnicity enrollment in Middle College High versus how many students go to McKinley County Schools in these ethnicities. And I bring this all, all, up only for thought because it is concerning. We do want solutions to address this issue. And so, a majority of our population in McKinley County is Native American. And Gallup McKinley County Schools is 79.3 percent Native American population currently. Actually, that was as of the 40th year. Um, it goes down, I'll mention some of the other, the, the groups as far as the ones that, uh, are, are majority of the population. Hispanic is 14.25 percent. Caucasian is 5.14 percent. Middle College High, when they started, it was a little higher than this. The Native American population in comparison to 79.3 percent of the county is 35 percent. Hispanic, 34 percent. Caucasian, 23 percent. Specifically, when we looked at last year, um, looking at this data, especially in the Native American populations, why is there this discrepancy? Why are Native Americans being underserved in a school designed specifically to meet the needs of the community? And so, that's been a concern that we, we have thought about. What can we do differently? I know this is also a concern of Middle College. It's been expressed. Specifically, remember a conversation where it was expressed that we have a problem here. We're only receiving in large numbers privileged kids of the community. And unfortunately, one of our concerns is, is how do we fill that gap for those students that don't have this opportunity? Many of the students come from all over the county and, but the majority come from here in Gallup. It's a little more difficult for students to, to make it to the college here and for you provided that opportunity. There are many students who would also like to participate through in Segi and Crown Point, Reyna, Tehachi, Navajo Pine, and many of the different areas around us. And so, as we contemplated how we can do a better job as a district in meeting those needs, because we have not seen that happen with Middle College High School, we have not any, seen any significant action with increasing the Native American population specifically. And so, that's where the idea came up, is to look at other opportunities we could provide as a district, and I believe that's what Mr. Kiomi was talking about, when he said that they supported also within the county, Gallup McKinley County Schools, providing more opportunities for what we call an AA or an associate's degree pathway. We want to fill that gap as a school district. And so, that's what we're trying to do right now, is put a program in place, it's actually called McKinley Academy, for next year, servicing all students across the entire county. And one of the things we thought about and looked into is why, why don't students from these outside areas of the county have this opportunity? And why are other students even within Gallup not participating? And because the Native American population even in Gallup is not 35 percent, it's much higher than that, for example. And we found a few reasons why. One of them is, there are obviously, and, you know, again, this kinda comes down to choice, but you could say you have to make a choice, in that a lot of students want to participate in school, at one of the high schools, where they're from, others to Tehachi or Calipai and be a graduate in that school. Uh, one of my daughters filled that, had that position. She wanted to graduate from Calipai and be more active in, in her class and things like that. And so, she chose not to go to Middle College, she really wanted that opportunity. And so, what we're doing is putting, putting together an academy so that students in the fall of next year, that they will be a part of, not a separate school, but an academy on UNM campus, so they can still be a Gallup High student, yet graduate from Calipai and also graduate with an associate's degree, which is the opportunity that Middle College provides also. Yet, that student will still be able to be a part of that class and, uh, that group of students at those schools, which is important to a lot of our students. And so, that increases choice for our students. In addition, transportation was a big hindrance. A lot of students didn't have the means to get their, and families that have the means to get their students into Gallup to dissipate in Middle College. I bet the numbers would be a lot higher if there was transportation. Yet, it's never been an option for them, and I'm not exactly sure why. I know other charters provide transportation across the state of Mexico. And so, why, that might be a good question, maybe Dr. Hunter can answer when he comes up here to present on our action plan. And there is money there to do that, it just takes creativity. Uh, food is also is a factor, and the students don't receive, the students don't receive lunch. At Middle College, they have to pay for that on their own. And there's also money. It's not that difficult to pay for lunch for students. So, why isn't that being provided? So, our program will provide transportation across the county, not only to UNM, but we're also working with NTU to provide another associate's degree pathway for those students, so that Segi doesn't have to travel two hours for this opportunity. And there's many other specifics that, uh, will roll out later in January about the opportunities for other students and students in Gallup and across the county, that they can also participate in this pathway to receive an associate's degree. And so, I wanna make sure that, uh, it's understood. I think there was one other concern in the spring, there was some funding issues in New Mexico, which we all have to, every time I hear about choice for Middle College, I totally understand. But also, there's a give and take of how much money goes where. And so, students, every time a student goes from Gallup McKinley County Schools, I'll use it for example, McKinley County Schools receives approximately, on average, 7,000 something a student. Middle College High, High School receives $13,000. So, there are some things at the state level, uh, which don't concern us here necessarily, maybe a few of us, that need to be worked through in the inequity that happens with funding in New Mexico and how that gets done in a more favorable way so we can still provide opportunities for students. And also, make sure that all students are taken care of, the students that have opportunity to go to Middle College or other charters, and the students that are in the public schools and may not have that opportunity or don't want that opportunity. And so, I hope this clarifies a little bit about what we're trying to do as a district in meeting and filling that gap of the other students that need the opportunity to receive their associate's degree. We believe there's probably, we're just guessing because it's hard to put a number on it, about 300 students in the county, to at least, probably, that could be productive and effective and have that opportunity to be successful in an associate's degree pathway. And we also wanna make sure that they're prepared for that. So, our academy will start in the ninth grade, so that students in the ninth grade have a ramped-up, more rigorous curriculum, try to prepare them for those college classes, which we think we found is a very important piece because across the state of New Mexico, most of the charters provide school and classes for ninth graders and early college programs. And so, uh, Vice President, that concludes my comments regarding this particular top topic. But again, I just wanna say in closing that this is about choice, it is about opportunities. We do need to meet the needs of all students, and so, there's a tough decision to be made on how we do that. And do we continue to provide more opportunities for certain students versus others? Or does, at some point, where does, where does that end? And then, where does action regarding meeting the needs of those students happen? And so, that's what we're going to try to do. When I talk about 300 students across the county, I'm talking about 100 or so for Middle College and a couple hundred more through the McKinley Academy program. And so, I'll turn the time back over to, to you, or I can just introduce the next topic, next person.
Members of the Board, are there any, uh, questions for Mr. Hyatt on his, uh, report, Superintendent Report?
So, Mr. Um, Mr. Mortensen, um, do you want us to do this now, or do you want us to wait till we get down to the seven B?
Let's, uh, let's wait till we get down to seven B, but if you have any questions for Mr. Hyatt about what he had to say about this upcoming McKinley Academy, uh, or, or any of the things that he reported on?
Okay, I'll leave my comments for Middle College later, but I just wanted to say for the, um, McKinley County Academy, or the county, yeah, McKinley Academy, I'm so excited for this. I think this is something that is gonna be amazing, and I, I, there was a comment made this weekend when we were working on a strategic planning, um, session, that we are taking a new avenue, we're taking a new direction, we're moving our education, I think it was Javana that said this, we're moving education into a different direction for our students. And we're not doing the same old, same old, same old thing again. We're actually bringing something new into our district and making that change. And I know people are scared of that change at times, but I, I, this is something that I, I'm really thankful for. Um, you know, I, I really got involved in this when my son made a goal for himself, and I'm gonna use my son and a couple of examples, but, um, he made a goal of himself because my, my other daughter, one right before him, um, received the Bill Gates, um, mil, um, award, um, scholarship. And he wanted to challenge himself a little more, and he goes, "I wanna get my associate's degree, Mom. I wanna get my associate's degree as much credit as I can before I graduate." He attended one graduation with me that he saw that students in high school were gaining college credits, and that was his goal, and that's where I started asking, what are we doing to help these children that have these high initiatives, that have these high goals for themselves? Because right now, there's, I don't even know if we have any dual credits available for our students in Thoreau. And so, having these opportunities for our students, I think, is gonna be wonderful and a big plus to them. We see it, I seen it, Segi, I seen it with Middle College, I seen it with different places where they are offering these programs, but why not more? Why not a more of our students? So, this, this, um, Gallup, or the McKinley Academy, I'm very thankful for. I know the conversation started when we were, um, talking about this with about a year, not less than a year ago, and the comments were made about, um, Gallup, Middle, I mean, Gallup Central. And that we've, opening these doors up for the students there, um, and providing these ac, um, programs that would be, that would be beneficial for them. And I'm just glad that those ideas have grown and flourished into something a lot bigger than I think what we were initially thinking, but, um, those are my comments, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manuelito. Um, I'll turn the time over to, uh, Mr. Hyatt to please introduce our, our, our next presenter.
I will, and I want to make one more quick comment before we do so, in that, uh, when we talk about an early college opportunity for students, and that's, that's one cohort of students in our county, there are many other opportunities we need to provide for our students in career pathways. And so, that's gonna be a big push by the district over the next few years. It's a little more complicated process, making sure that students leave high school with opportunities, with licenses, certification, to go straight into the workforce or, uh, stepping stone to get to the point where they can enter a techno school, technical school or college with, uh, with the heads up on, uh, leg up on getting through with a licensure program. So, I, I am, I am grateful for the opportunity to introduce Dr. James Malm, the CEO from UNM Gallup. He is new to our community, and so, I wanna let him introduce himself and talk a little bit about some of the things that, uh, UNM Gallup provides us and some of the partnerships and ideas we have together in moving forward. So, Dr. Malm.
Thank you, thank you. Vice President Mortensen, members of the Board, Superintendent Hyatt, we come with greetings and introduction from great University of New Mexico Gallup campus. I started my position a little over a month ago. Uh, Mike was on the search committee, uh, that helped, uh, bring me in, in the national search. So happy to be here. I'm in the process of moving my family, uh, east, uh, to join me, uh, and Gallup, uh, is our home. My daughter, uh, is a K-12 licensed teacher. My daughter is a K-12 licensed teacher, college music teacher. And it was great to see our educators tonight with that opening music and the parade of educators that we have here who are doing fantastic work with our students every day in the classroom, year in and year out. As I have an old daughter who's a teacher, I have a younger daughter who will be a student here in McKinley Gallup Schools. And Mike and I started a relationship immediately upon my arrival, where we were asking the question, what can we do to serve the citizens of Gallup McKinley County, the students, and to make life better for all? I'm an educator, we're educators. And we're part of an educational ecosystem. We have pre-K, K through 12, we can do the next two years, 13 and 14, at the university here in town, and we have a great research university in Albuquerque. It's all part of the same system. The more access we can give our students to our educational services, the more success that we can measure as they come out, is built on innovation, partnerships, and fantastic educators doing what we do best. So I'm here, in a good way, to highlight the partnership that we have between our two institutions and highlight the great work that we're doing together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maum, we appreciate your time. Are there any questions from the board? Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
I always have questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We really, really continue to have, we like your partnership, we thank you for everything you're doing. We would like to have more opportunities, and I don't know if there's a discussion you had with Mr. Hyatt, but to provide endorsements for our teachers. And right now, they go to like Westron and different places like that to get those endorsements, and we would really like to continue to have your assistance and your, your guidance or your partnership in that area for our, our teachers that might need those endorsements. And also, we want to continue to grow our own here in our community, and that's one thing, again, with our strategic plan that we were discussing, that we want to keep our, our own individuals, our own staff here. And we have educational assistants that have got college credits but have never gotten the opportunity or the assistance they need to continue to get their degrees in teaching, and also to have dual credit in our schools. We need that partnership to have some of our, maybe assisting some of our teachers with their master's degree program to help us sign off on those dual credits. I mean, just continuing to have, I don't want that struggle anymore. I don't want to continue to ask, I hope we're not asking again in a year from now, to have that partnership with you. I know we asked a year ago, and I've been, this is my third year on the board, and, you know, I, that's one thing I really would like you to help us on, on those three areas. I'm sure I'll think of more, and I'll pass it along to Mike if I do, but right now, those are the three main areas that I think we really need that assistance on.
And for clarification, that teacher endorsement, that's a four-year endorsement.
No, what, what are they called, the, T-SO, I'm sorry, the T-SO endorsements.
Okay. Let's put it on the agenda. I, I always want to be careful to under-promise and over-deliver.
Words to live by.
But we've got great work ahead of us to work together on.
Yeah, if I could just mention also, Dr. Maum, very gracious in reaching out to us and us to him to look at more ways we can provide better opportunities for our students, and also help U and M Gallup branch. And I think that was a concern when I went to the board meeting there, that members and lots of things that, that challenges that, that school, that college faces. And there's a lot of ways in which we can help. We are a feeder district too, that's one of our colleges, that we feed a lot of students too. And so there's things we can do better on our end too, along with U and M Gallup, so that they're meeting our needs and that we're also meeting their needs. And so we have some ideas that we are working on now to make that happen, amongst many, many ideas that we discussed.
One more comment. I, I graduated from U and M with my degree, and, but one thing that I would really have to say, because I live in Thiru, which is right between Gallup and Grants, and we have New Mexico State right there. And it was, just to say, it's a lot more easier working with New Mexico State University for our children, especially during the summer, because we are, they, they offer summer programs to where our students can earn dual credit. And, you know, I mean, those opportunities, they're really pushing to help us in the areas, but I can't get anything from U and M. I've asked, I've, because I work at a community center, sir, I work at a community center in Thiru, that we do a lot with GED programs, we do a lot of suicide prevention, a lot of parenting classes, so those kind of initiatives we have at, at, in Thiru. We're right in the middle, you know, and I just, I just want you to know that. Thank you.
I hear you loud and clear. Your students are my students, they're our students. And I've been meeting so many great people in the community, everyone's telling me all the good work they're doing together, but there is the voice that we can do more, and it hasn't been everything for all with us in the past. So my coming tonight, and I asked Mike if I could come and say hello, is, is to get us started on that and, and look to that new horizon together.
It's a new day. Thank you, Dr. Maum.
More Lobos, less Aggies.
You're sandwiched by some U and M grads.
Let's go down to our next section, which is board reports. I have a, a quick idea for this section. I would be happy to forfeit my time and allow Ms. Manulito to report on our, on our strategic planning that she alluded to. I don't know if my fellow board members would be willing to do the same thing. Not all of you at once. Go ahead, Ms. Manulito.
Thank you very much, board members. Like I said, this is very exciting. I'm so thankful to have our administration, our, there, and our board members there. We had a wonderful second session, this is actually our second session of our strategic planning. We had one a month earlier than this, and we were all exhausted by the end of the day, and I think that's how we felt again this day, but it's a lot of good collaboration. We're working on a strategic plan that will help us, help us with a lot of the direction we really want to see for our children. It's all youth-driven, and I think that's what I love about this, is continuing to put our children first in different areas. We started off with kind of re-looking at our vision, our mission, and that the process that we're working on, we're incorporating some goals, we're breaking down those goals, and I think we're just very thankful for, and we're also including our values in this. Some, just to give you some highlights, our values is looking at the whole child, cultural diversity, excellence within, in the pursuing excellence, prosperity, community engagement, equality, equity, and access to, and those are the values we have. And we've broken it down, we've, we went from a small little plan to now this big plan. And I think that the fine work, the fine tuning, and crossing the Ts and dotting the Is will be done by administration and by the staff, but I think just having that direction, the roads that we're opening up to, as an overview, as an umbrella for our administration and staff, I think is getting a lot clearer with us. And I think I really would like to say I'm very thankful for Phoebe, Fiona, Fiona?
Ilani.
Filani? Oh. Filana.
Ilana Kylie.
Filana and, yes, Jeff, and the son-in-law, Mark?
Nick.
Nick. They were all there, just guiding us, and they, I really appreciate her guidance to where, she's a tough cookie, she really is. And if she didn't like what we were, she, she gave her opinion, she was very strong and said, you know, "But this is going to work better," or "Maybe we need to change this," or, I think, I, that's what I really appreciated with her. And for me, I'm always intimidated with administration, or when you're in the hospital with a doctor, you always have that intimidation. She was a very strong young, young lady, because she looked really young, but I'm very thankful that we got that direction. I can't wait to get this out, I can't wait to complete it. I left kind of earlier, early on, I think I left at 3:30 on Saturday, so I don't know if there's another date that was set.
We changed the whole plan.
Oh, yeah.
We waited till you left. No, it's, we're going to work on it further as administration and, and board members as, as needed, but it's going to take a little more time to fine tune.
I don't know if there's anything else any board members would like to add to that, but...
I was pretty excited as well, Ms. Manulito, about the momentum that I felt like we had coming out of that. There was some excellent, excellent stuff coming out, and I'm anxious to roll that out to the, to the community and the staff of the, of the district in general. If there's no other reports, let's move on to number four, notices and communication. A, December 16th, there's an IEC meeting here in the boardroom at 9:00 AM. December 25th to 29th, winter break for students. It does continue all the way to January 5th. January 8th is our next Board of Education meeting, and that will be here, is that here? Thank you. And then after that, January 15th, Martin Luther King Day holiday, and there's no school there, so we won't have another board meeting until January 8th. We don't have any old business, so we'll go ahead and move on into our new business.
Mr. Vice President, just want to make sure you clarify, a typo. I don't want any students out there having a heart attack. Our winter break is a lot longer than December 25th to 29th, it's actually a couple weeks. So we, the last day for students is the 22nd of December. I think we're off, we're also off the 1st. It goes for two weeks from there, so.
To the 5th?
Yeah. Right. So I just want to make sure that it's understood that it's, it's longer than a week.
Let's go on into our new business. A, do we have, is, is, are you presenting that, or is Javana presenting?
No, well, we actually have Mateka and Jay Santianas to be here to talk about the contract agreement, which has been modified, and that's why it was postponed from last month to this month. And so I want to give them an opportunity to explain the changes in services that they are offering to provide.
Great. You have the floor.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mr. Vice President, board members, Superintendent Hyatt, Ms. Nez, Associate Superintendent, and friends. I am Mateka Santianas. With me this evening is my husband Jay Santianas, as you all know. And we have been honored to be your lobbyists for the district for approximately ten years. We'd like to start off this evening by congratulating the teachers, staff, and schools that were recognized earlier. Being a Gallup Bingo myself, I'm always very proud to come back home and to share this excitement. Great job, everyone. Thank you for always making not just this district, but our students, and our families, and our community proud. Mr. Vice President, board members, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. You should have in your packets our MJS consulting agreement for you, for your review and approval. This agreement is modified from the previous agreement in terms of scope of work and price. As a means of saving the district money, our scope of work will include the following, and there's about five bullet points that you can take a look at. The change from the previous agreement is that we will continue to track legislation that has a direct impact on the district and is not general to all school districts. We will continue to work on legislation that is specifically written for our school district as well as other items listed. A little background and, for the reason for this, is with our current superintendent and our former superintendent, we have noticed a change in the scope of work, which has been a framework which has been modified to be specific to legislation and topics that have a direct impact on our school district. Prior to that, it was a much larger scope of work that included all education issues around the state, and that was what we were directed to do. We were just, you know, perfectly fine with, with any scope of work that we're directed. So with that in mind, we have refined to focus on primary issues again that affect specifically to the district. And we've changed our business model and our philosophy in business in that model is to not charge for services that our clients aren't receiving. As well as that, it seems to us that the tracking for legislation is also a duplication on all education-related legislation. The duplication of what is provided to you, you also receive from the School Board Association, the Superintendents Association, and an internal tracking system from your staff. But we love working with that, and thank you. So that's the basic and bottom line of this, is that from our perspective, we evaluate you as a client every year to make sure that you're getting the best Navajo Nation Council school districts in the surrounding area regarding transportation boundary agreements. We've also facilitated meetings with, with the school district, the board, and members of the Navajo Nation Council regarding in-state, out-of-state, and in-district sharing of transportation.
Mr. Vice President?
I, I just really would like to say, Mateka and Jay, thank you. I think one, first of all, for your honesty and integrity to where you're reamping your contract with us, your agreement with us, and telling us that, and making those changes to decrease. I think that, that's very admirable, and I'm thankful that you do have our children's best interest at that, with the funding that goes into your contract, that I think that, I don't know how many people would do that, that would come back to the board and say, you know, "We're, we're, we're changing our scope, but we're also re-looking at the salary or the compensation that you guys are providing us." And I'm, I'm very thankful for that, and I would really like to also hear, if you guys are done, I don't know, I'll, I'll wait on my last comment.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that, you know, I've been on the board for seven-plus years, you know, I have seen the work of Mateka and her firm, being able to go from one extreme to the other, meaning the work that our superintendents expected of them, you know, started with Arsenault, and then Geppetti, and then of course now. And, you know, and I've seen them where they were able to handle a heavy workload and then come back down to what was expected from the next superintendent. You know, they were able to work with our superintendents well, our administration in order to make sure they... our administration, in order to make sure they... Make sure that our superintendents didn't feel that they were being overstepped in any way. And I appreciate that as well, as well as working with the board. You know, the information that they provide to the board, keeping us informed, and especially during legislation. You know, I think that they've done such great work for our district, and I really appreciate them for everything they have done for us.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any other comments?
One comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm not comfortable with a two-year contract. I'd be willing to do it one year.
Mr. Vice President and Secretary, thank you for those comments. The reason that it's a two-year contract is in the 10 years that we've worked for the school district, it's always been a two-year contract, sir.
Hi, Mr. Vice President. I do agree with that. You know, every time we have done our lobbyist contracts, it always has been a two-year. You know, it's never been one year, so I don't see a problem with going with the two-year and for us to try to make the change to a one-year after all these years.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vice President, if I might address that just real briefly. The reason it's kind of a two-year contract because you have the interim session and the legislative session, they kinda roll into each other. You have one legislative session that's coming up, and the interim session, we would work all the way through it and come short of the next legislative session that you worked the whole interim for. So it kinda works hand in hand, but there are ways of getting out of the contract.
If I could have Vice President, members of the board, like have Javana talk a little bit about contracts and how they work specifically in this situation. I think that might clarify the question or the answer.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. Within your packet, you may notice that there's a stipulation within this contract that allows for termination with written notice within 90 days of the date of termination. That's typical in each one of our contracts for multiple reasons, including potential funding issues. So that may be able to detract any concerns you may have. We can, without written notice, terminate the contract, as can the organization that's providing services should they have any issues or concerns in delivering services to us.
Thank you, Ms. Hanks. I think I'm, you know, I'm probably comfortable going ahead and taking a vote on it. I think some of the questions arise... I mean, I'll take some of the blame for it. I'm inexperienced as a board member, and so I think I probably... It would be valuable for me to learn more about what exactly the role of lobbyist is working with us. And just wanna make sure that, you know, we're comfortable and you're comfortable with what we're doing going forward. But I... With that being said, are we comfortable moving on with the vote? Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
I just... I really would like to hear the recommendation from our superintendent.
Yeah, I'd love to talk about this particular topic. It's because I am also not an expert in the politics and the process that happened in Santa Fe. And so having somebody there to guide us is valuable in moving legislation and bills forward as much as we possibly can. And understanding, it's more complicated than people might think. And so it's been beneficial to have this vendor provide services for us. I have heard some of the concerns, not specifically with them, but with how this works. And I think that's part of what the Vice President mentioned, is there needs to be more education for the board in understanding what options are and what the vendor has and does provide for us. And so I do value, I think I mentioned this, we have a committee, and Mrs. Manuelito and Mr. Long are on that committee. We met already and talked about this topic specifically and shared our feelings about it. And it was my recommendation at that time that we move forward because there is more to learn at some point. It may be that we don't need somebody to guide us through those processes we're fighting for our students. But I don't think that time is right now personally. I think we're too close to legislative session to make that kinda change with our goals that we have, or at least some direction that we have that we may wanna go. So I have always worked well and been supported on the Hill, Capitol, and Roundhouse, I mean. And it's been a... It's been a good experience. And so I've learned a lot from Mateka and Jay. And at some point, you know, maybe I'll be an expert. We won't need him anymore, but I'm not there yet, I can promise you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Let's go ahead with a roll call. Joan, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
I would like to say that, you know, I think they are worth every cent that we put out. Plus even more, I would think, but my vote is yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will be in contact with you prior to Wednesday session if we'd like to meet. And we'll speak to you tomorrow.
Mr. Vice President and members of the board, Superintendent, thank you so much for your continued support and trust in us. And we, since you are all here this evening, we have been working with superintendents and have talked with a few of the board members since this spring about a legislative workshop between your lobbyists and the board, so we can get to know each other better and so that we can explain, have more time to explain and go into detail about what we do on your behalf, and also get feedback from you. It's very important that you know that we understand that we are at your direction and we work for you. We don't speak without getting the approval. And we can discuss that at length any time, and we look forward to that. We also want to recognize that you have some outstanding and the best legislators in your district. It goes without saying that the Gallup School District has leadership that represents you, not only in years of service, but also in the leadership capacity. You have leaders that are Chair of your Legislative Finance Committee and also Senate Finance Committee. In the past, your area legislators have also sat on the education committees and any other committees that are pertinent to your district. And that doesn't always happen in districts or school districts or other organizations. And without this strong leadership and representation in Santa Fe, you could very well be at a disadvantage, but you're not. You have an exceptional team of legislators, an exceptional board, an exceptionally superintendent staff, and we're honored to be part of that.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our next item of new business. Approval, increasing enrollment of 20 students. Mr. Hyatt, please.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, we'll turn the time over to Dr. Rob Hunter if he has anything to say before we vote.
Yate? Mr. Vice President, Superintendent, members of the board, I come here before you tonight on behalf of the families who are on the waiting list, many of whom you see sitting before you today. I wanna thank Mr. Hyatt for acknowledging a really concerning fact, and one that I have addressed both with Mr. Hyatt and Mr. Geppetti. When I arrived at Middle College three years ago, our native students were our third-largest group, and I found that to be unconscionable. I've gone to chapter meetings. I've attended an Indian Ed Committee meeting, and I'm pleased to tell you that our native enrollment is now the largest group. But I will tell you, we have much further to go with this. One of the things I wanted to point out, 30% of our enrollment includes children of GMCS administrators and staff. That's 30%. And with only 100 slots, it's a challenge to increase our equity. But this is the same issue that we see amongst all of the state's 23 early and middle college high schools. So I'm really pleased that the Public Education Department is putting out the requirement that all early and middle colleges must reflect the demographics of their local districts. This is an issue that will resolve itself. Really, what I wanted to ask of you is, what answer do I give to our families on the waitlist? And really, genuinely, I make this request based upon our mutual interests in meeting the needs and wishes of our students and their families. And I'm here to entertain any questions you may have.
If I could make one comment, Mr. Vice President, I don't think you've included to this. I hope... I just don't want people to take it the wrong way, is that educators in McKinley County don't have any type of an edge in their students being enrolled in middle college. I know you didn't mean that, but I don't want them to take your comments the wrong way.
It is an open enrollment, but it's a lottery system. But that's a fact, and that's a reality.
Absolutely.
Members of the board, do you have any questions for Dr. Hunter?
I guess I'll go. I'm a board member for District 3 area, and I represent... A majority of my schools are county schools. And the concern that I have, sir, is a concern that was brought up, and a question was asked, "How long are we gonna continue to deny?" I wanna know that same question to that answer because my children in our county are being denied. Our children are not getting those services out in the county due to... Even, like I said, I'm gonna use my son as an excuse again, or as an example. We have one income coming into this house... Into our home, and I only work 68 hours a week. And, I mean, 60 hours every two weeks. I'm sorry. I love my title, but I am not getting the pay of an executive director. But I will go to bat, and I will do what I can, and I put in over 100 hours for my community every two weeks. And so there's one income coming in. My husband is disabled. And so we have one child, a sophomore, through high school. There's no way that we can trans... I'm sure if we help, not help for my family and everything, we'd be able to find the means to bring him in. But then he also has football. He has his sports. And those are things that the distance, the transportation, and his sports is gonna hinder this program or hinder him from even applying to get in. And the concern that we continue to hear in our county schools is this program is for the privileged and the elite people of Gallup. I am not an elite. I am not privileged. My son is not privileged. So we know straight off the bat we're not gonna make it. I don't... I... I have a problem with that. When I read different things about this, there's statements made that this is an at-risk program. This is for students that are in need of this. But we have children, students, that are going there whose parents are very well off. And I can't even get my son there. So they're picking the cream of the crop, or people... And that's what bothers me. That's what I'm bothered by. And I have a hard time... Who's gonna get those positions? It's not gonna be who we want in there. It's gonna be people that have the means to pay for their children's education but are not because of this program. They're getting a free ride, and they're getting accommodations to where they're getting their students in. But the kids that really, really need it by one income, by parents, single mothers, by children that are in different foster programs that need this program are not getting in. That's what I have a problem with. And I voiced this concern to you when we talked by ourselves. And but that's where I wanted to see statistics. I wanted to see how... What are the... Who are the kids that are getting in? Because it bothers me, and that's the main thing that bothers me. And I don't know if I wanna put 20 more kids in there when we don't know those who... Where those families are gonna come from. I'm glad there's a program like that... Like this in our district. But it's gotta be fair, and it's gotta be for everybody else and not just our city schools when we have kids in our county that want this, and we're not providing it.
Sure. Members of the board, are there any other questions?
Well, would you allow me to?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for bringing that, Ms. Manuelito. There are a number of things that I can say about the situation. I do know who those students are on the waitlist. I do have statistics on those students. One of the things, too, is that I think that people have been operating under the idea that students who are interested in coming from middle college are the cream of the GMCS crop. I can tell you that 40% that sit on the waitlist now don't even come from a GMCS school. We have students who are homeschooled. We have students who are coming from Wingate. We have a number of them that come from Mahoda. And that's been pretty stable over the past three years. When I had concluded earlier by explaining that the equity issue is huge amongst early and middle colleges across the state. We are not the only one that serves what you've identified as a privileged population. Therefore, the Public Ed Department, and in my mind, very rightly so, has put out the requirement. When they're defining what an early college and middle college must look like, you must reflect, and this is coming in, the enrollment demographically of your community, of your local district. I think that's a huge step forward, and that is something that I support. When you talk about how do you get the students from the county to attend a school like this one? I can tell you that I've been at Middle College for three years. It has been a rocky road. The relationship with UNM needed mending. It's taken some time. And if we look at what we look like now and how far we've come, UNM is poised. It's in... It's more welcoming than we've ever seen it. And so getting through some of those challenges, the next step that the counselor and I had discussed, and we're planning to bring this... We've been planning to bring this to the UNM student services. And that is, listen, the way that you guys have classes scheduled, it didn't make a lot of sense. You couldn't really transport students because they weren't following the 8:00 to 3:30 schedule. And so how do you bus students? So the idea has been approach UNM. Now that the relationship is much tighter and much better, and ask them, "Would you consider clustering? Would you offer a cohort of courses that will meet back-to-back within a specific timeframe that would then enable us to be able to request the transportation that by regulation we're allowed to have?" And we're at that point now. We're moving forward and making that request makes sense. And like I said, being there three years, you identify what are the priorities, what are the areas that need attention? That's one of them. What I am pleased, and I had expressed this to Mr. Hyatt at the UNM Advisory Board meeting, the fact that you've been in conversation with UNM about that very thing, getting those courses offered in such a way to make transportation possible, that... That's ideal. Because when that happens, our students are your students. We're part of the GMCS district count. We're entitled to transportation from through Tohatchee, from wherever that those buses may run. And we'll enter... And we'll enter into a negotiation for that service. And we're ready now, so it is our hope that that is going to enable us to serve students who've been underserved. Any other questions?
Any comment, Vice President? Transportation could have been provided, it was a choice not to. Food is another choice not to provide. I think, I want to make sure the Board understands that it's not just, it's not a scheduling thing. You can still try to provide transportation for these students, and it's never been done.
I've been there for three years. And this is something-
I'm just talking about, I think the conversation last spring was, this is part of it. Part of it, there was a financial discussion, and part of it was equity that we're discussing now.
Yep.
And I think that's, that's the concern, is you, and this is tough. I understand that the choice and opportunities, I'm trying to look at it globally. But when you ask for more students in the spring, and you come back and ask for more students in the fall, and not one thing has changed, when it's not that difficult to get a bus, at least to run to one outlying area, or two, start, and provide food, or whatever else you might be able to do differently to attract more students, I think that's where there is some struggles. And maybe those, maybe, maybe it was too difficult, I don't know, but you know, I got a call from the state asking me for salaries for your district, and they said, I don't know what the salaries are for the district, for the middle college high school. And, but then I went and got it for them because they couldn't get it from you, or from one of your employees. And so in looking at that, there's, there's opportunities there to still provide the opportunities you provide, and opportunities to use your funding in a way to meet students' needs more equitably. And I think that's, that's part of the concern, is that, when does this end? I mean, just stating that the law is potentially changing, or the rules regarding charter schools is forcing us to go to the point where we have to provide equity, or better equity across the district? I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a valid argument, because there are many charters across the state that do provide those opportunities for their entire county, or school district. And I know we have a large one, makes it more difficult. So I understand that you may not be able to help students across the whole county. We obviously have more capacity than you do. But I think, I think we need to be clear, like I said, this is a tough, this is a tough, a tough decision because you don't want to not provide opportunities. But you also want to make sure that there's equity, and I think that's a valid concern. It was a concern of ours, I had no idea, until I looked at the data when we came, last spring, started looking into what specifically is going on, and why can't these opportunities be provided? And I, and in my looking into it, and even more so as of late, because of that phone call, asking for salaries and things, it just becomes more clear to me that there are, there were opportunities, and I just don't think they were taken advantage of. And that's not a knock on anybody, because there's lots of things that we as a district can do better. Totally, I see it, I think about it every night, the things that we could do better, that we might have missed, and may use our funding more appropriately. I just want to make sure the Board understands that it's not the norm necessarily to not provide transportation, some of these things to attract students. There's plenty of opportunity there to do so.
Yeah, a couple of things I would say in response to that. Yeah, the LESC did request copies of our employment contracts, which I thought was rather interesting. And Board, I want you guys to understand that if there's an issue with any of our employees' compensation, our compensation is tied to the GMCS salary schedule. We are, we are paid according to that schedule. Now, moving on, the transportation piece, I did my best to try to elucidate what's going on there. And that is, it took some time. Like I said, I've been there three years, it's taken some time to really groom that relationship with UNM. And to work with people at the university to get them to be more open to having high school students in their courses. There's been a changing of the guard at UNM, there have been new people who've come onboard, they're much more open to this. They've seen the success of our students, and they're, they're now to the point where we can approach them, and we can request, because I will tell you this. We've had department chairs at UNM in the past who have told us, when you schedule your students into our courses, please, make sure you limit the number who are taking these classes. We don't want to see greater than 50% of our enrollment be high school students, because then it, it feels like a high school course. We've no choice but to appease them with that. But at the same time, it was a wake-up call to us that we've got to do a lot of work with our students, with our PR, with the university, we've got to get this mindset turned. Get them to, to be okay with an increased number of students in their courses. I think we've come to that point, and I think that making a request, and especially with a brand-new Student Services Director who Mr. Hyatt's been working very closely with, working through her, I believe that we can now make the request. Can you, would you consider putting courses together in such a way that we'll be able to piggyback and use transportation? I don't think that it was really a viable, or much of a possibility in the past. I'm not so sure that they would have considered our request to cluster courses together. But at this point, I think the time is now, and it's ripe, and I think we can make that happen.
Question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Rob, or Mr. Hunter, Dr. Hunter, why now? Why now are you asking for this increase? Because for me, I would really foster and mature and work on that relationship with your own department, with your own UNM individuals, where you're housed, before, and get this transportation, get this food issue. And you said, you just quoted, I'm quoting you, you have a lot of work to still do.
To get our enrollment equitable.
Why don't you work on this relationship, continue to work on this relationship? Continue to find ways you can bring transportation in. Continue to ways to feed our children lunch. Why don't you work on that before you ask us for more students? Because that's where my concern is, is how are you going to get these children here from Navajo, from Reima, from Tegai, from Thoreau, Tohatchie? Where are you, where, how are you going to get our students here? And we have, we have those students that need this opportunity. So I would really, I would understand you working on that, then coming to us and asking for that increase. And as a Board, we would see that effort being put into transportation and food, and making that relationship grow better. I mean, we just, we just met the CEO this evening. And, you know, those are my concerns that I brought up to him, because we've struggled with UNM also. We, we're, we continue to ask, and we weren't given those, the same, the same, the stepchild treatment, just like you.
I know how it feels.
And so why don't you build on that then? I, I just, I have a real, I don't know.
We have been, we've been working very hard with that. We even have our instructors teaching UNM courses. We've gone, we've gotten so far, and we're building, we're helping to build some of their departments. It's, it's really come a long way, and it is a synergistic relationship. So yeah, these are pieces that have definitely gotten a great deal of our attention and our efforts. And I'm pleased that Gallup McKinley, when you bring your McKinley Academy onboard, a lot of those pieces have been ironed out, they've been worked out for you. And I think that's going to be really advantageous, and I really, I don't see an issue with both programs on the campus. You, you may say it's, it's not competitive, but even if it is, competition is good. Because ultimately, it's going to be the students who win, it keeps everybody at the top of their game. So I look at it as, there's, there's space, and in talking with Dr. Malm, he has expressed, there's space for everyone. You know, he talks about an ecological landscape, you've probably heard him mention that term. His definition to me about that was, this campus can support it, all of it. And the reality is that there are families who want this opportunity and need to be allowed this opportunity. So moving forward, we have ironed out a lot of those pieces. As far as transportation is, I'll tell you now, really is not possible for the spring semester. Courses have not been aligned in such a way that our students can follow a schedule that enables them to do that. There may be a few, but you can bet that come fall, that is the conversation. Can you offer courses that will be more friendly towards students who otherwise don't have the opportunity, except through transportation? And providing transportation is something we can do when they cluster the way that we're going, that we intend to, to request.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Are there any other questions?
Um, yeah, you know, I would like to just say that, you know, I was on the Board at the time that we went, we approved the 70 to 100. And even at that time, the Board that was here during that time had a very hard time with that. You know, we had major debates, major discussions on that. You know, due to the fact was, the question always came up too, why can't Gallup McKinley County School District provide this service to our children ourselves? That was always the question, you know, what are we doing about it? Why are we allowing somebody else to come in and educate our children in that manner? And still today, is the same question, why aren't we doing it? You know, I have nieces and nephews who went to school in Albuquerque, and attending their graduations, seeing high schools that graduate with their associate degrees. You know, and they're, we have a large district, and we should be at the forefront, especially with the amount of students that we have. And I really feel that with the academy that our superintendent and our administration is going forth with, and I really think that this would benefit more students. I think we're going to be able to provide these services within Gallup McKinley County as well. You know, and, you know, and out of all fairness, you know, we have adding 20 more students. You know, at the time we asked, you know, you have, we give you 30 more students from the 70 to 100. Okay, how is this going to be fair when you guys were allowing, you get one draw, you draw one student, sister, and the sister has a brother? Okay, that allowed the brother to come in.
Yes.
So that wasn't a fair draw, because the brother was never drawn, but because you have one child that was selected, and the sibling gets to go in as well, if they wanted. So, you know, I, I didn't see the fairness in that. Because like you said, we have a waiting list.
Sure.
And the waiting list should be, the waiting list of the name of the students on their list, and not draw one and then bring your sibling in as well, or... So that, I didn't see the fairness in that.
That's in the administrative code for charter schools, you have to have a sibling rule. I imagine, well, I don't know, I mean, your school, McKinley Academy? Not a charter, I'm not sure you're going to have to abide by that, you'd have to look into it, but you can search in the New Mexico Ministry of Code, it's a requirement.
The academy doesn't need to follow those rules. It's a, it's a, their student's still a high school student, one of the high schools in the county or city.
And we, you know, like I said too, the reality is that we do serve a lot of students that are not GMCS students. And those students are now considered part of GMCS as we are the district operator, as charter school. So, you know, what that does is it brings in students who otherwise wouldn't be GMCS students. And that, like I said, that's about 40% of our current enrollment, that's 40% of our waitlist. That's, that's pretty stable. But in closing, I guess what I would say is to consider, you know, take a look, you've, you've got families here. I've got to give them an answer, I get calls all the time, people are interested. You know, there's room for all sorts of models. Who are we to deny, you know? There is absolutely space for our model, for your proposed model. And in fact, I would like to see us get to a point where we are not considering one another rivals, but we're collaborating. I've got a lot of great ideas, I've been there three years, but in those three years, I've learned a ton. How to navigate that environment, the pieces that need to happen. I would love to be able to help you in any way I can with the model that you're bringing onboard. Why reinvent the wheel? We can work together. We're not a state chartered school, you all know, we've talked about that before, the state chartered school is competition. You know, they're not your students. We didn't elect to be state chartered. Why? Because the relationship with Gallup McKinley, I think can be very productive.
One more, one more. When we did increase the 70 to 100, at that time, when they came to the Board, they said that if we approved the extra 30 students, that would be the cap. And that would be what, would be, what they, what they would be able to handle. So now what makes, what makes it that you're able to handle more students?
We've got a really good staff, I mean, it's four full-time teachers. I myself teach a course that grants UNM college credit, as well as, you know, our counselor teaches the course. We've got a really good handle on things. You probably saw in the request that our staffing is such that if we move beyond 120, this is not something that we're prepared to do. 120, we can handle 120. To answer your question even more specifically, when we went to 100 students, we saw a real big need, and in part because it was so challenging. And, and these are all the things I want to help you guys with, if you would let me. Very challenging for our students to earn science credits on that UNM campus. Limited offerings, tough courses. So one of the things that we did do is, we had added a teacher at that time. We have two that are dual endorsed in math and in science, both of whom can also teach college. That has helped, and that has helped us to get to where we are now, where we can max out at 120 students.
Okay, also can you, can you tell me how, how you feel that your, the Gallup, the mid-college meets the demographics of the communities?
Oh, it doesn't right now, that's, and Kevin, you know this. I mean, my wife is Navajo, my children are half Navajo, this is a huge issue for me. And it was the most glaring thing that when I came onboard and I saw what we looked like, I said, how can this be? We should be about 70%. And we have an open lottery, what can I do with that? I can't give enrollment preference, and so best I could do was to look at the recruitment end of it. I've been to chapter meetings, I've been to the Indian Act Committee meeting, I've gotten the word out, and that has helped. But we still have far to go. What's going to be really nice, and I've even had conversations with Dr. Perea at PED about this, I said, listen, I like that you're putting out that they're all early colleges, must reflect the same demographics of their local community, of their local school district. That's the right thing. And you're approaching it through the recruitment efforts. And I've been working that hard, but I can tell you that you can work that as hard as possible, but it doesn't mean you're going to get equity. I said, unless you do something with teeth, unless you take a look at what Texas is doing and have a dual lottery, I don't know how you're going to be able to do this. And what I was told was, I agree with that. PED said, yes, you're right. So unfortunately, New Mexico is not an affirmative action state. So we can't enforce this. I said, but it's going to come to a point. I said, but it's going to come to a point. I said, we're recruiting hard, and we're going to continue to do it harder. Because we need to see equity. So, it, it does, it personally, it pains me to hear these accusations about you're not equitable. That's a sensitive issue for me, and one that I have been working tirelessly to fix.
Vice President, I want to make sure, these aren't accusations, we're just trying to tell the truth, be open and transparent with everybody about what's happening. I think Mr. Mitchell may be touching on something that is also a concern, I'll throw it out there, and I'll, I'll shut up for the night. You know, when we increased thirty students last time, your business official went from half-time to full-time, which is a pretty hefty salary. That money could have been used, and maybe there's other options where you could have provided transportation. Because it's not about scheduling. I know lots of students live in middle college, and a lot of them start at nine and get out at three, three thirty. And maybe some that take some later classes.
We try to be, to kind of sports get this.
So, it's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it can be done. So, that's not, that's not, that's not the hindering factor for providing transportation. I just think it's about a better use of funds, really. And so, if you see things like that and you're concerned, thirty more students, and then all of a sudden, we're upping people's salaries and doing things that may not mean to be done. I mean, we have a business official that makes a little more than your business official, handling two hundred million with some other supports. But a one point six million dollar budget is not a full-time bookkeeper. And so, when people see things like that, that, that causes, it's cause for concern. Because maybe it would need, I don't know, not in your finances, but that was exactly what it needed.
No, we're actually not going to increase staff, or salaries.
But the last time it went, you doubled somebody's salary, probably, I don't know exactly what it made before, but it went from half-time to full-time. And so, those types of things, that's what we, that's what the action that we see. When other things may have been talked about before as options and things we could do differently.
And it is true, we have to wear a lot of hats in our school, we are a small staff. And, you know, the district is, is fortunate to have, you know, someone who oversees personnel, someone who oversees facilities, someone who oversees payroll. I will tell you that I'm one administrator. And this is actually the first year that we have been operating with only one. In the past, there, there had always been a CEO and a principal. It's been hard, because it's been a reauthorization year. A lot of work I've had to do, I've rewritten tons of policies, and it's just me. But, it's important, and, you know, I devote my time to it. So, just wanted to bring that out there too. Yes, small staff means a lot of additional duties. And sometimes with those duties, you know, we can find increments, but they're the same increments the district offers. We don't, we don't do anything that's not on the district's salary scale.
Members of the board, are we ready for, to take a vote here? Joe?
Mr. Mitchell?
I think that with our plans of doing our academy and trying to ensure that our district is going to be able to provide these services to more students, I really feel at this time that I will have to vote no.
Ms. Manuelito?
I also vote no on this vote, just due to, I really want to explain myself to your board, to your administration, to yourself, sir. I, it has nothing to do with you or them. And I just really would like to see how you're going to change this for us, for your students, to where there's more involvement in our county schools. When I became a board member, that's one thing I heard constantly, what it's not fair, what the inner-city schools get that we don't get in the county. And I still feel this is, in that same direction. And I'm going to fight for this, that there's more equality and equal treatment for our students in our county area. And until there's a transportation and food, then I will, I, I'm, I would be more at ease to vote yes on it, but, but not at this time, sir. So, I vote no.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Mortensen?
Uh, no, I want to see a little more fully baked plan and revisit it in the late spring and look at it. I want to see, see a, a plan to address some of the concerns that were brought up tonight, and then let's talk about it. I'm not opposed to competition, but, I mean, I think you've heard plenty of concerns this evening, and, and I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a plan, and, and maybe this isn't the best setting for that. I'm open to whatever, but I'd like to sit down and, and, and hear a plan to, to address some of the concerns.
What I would say is that if you're saying to return in spring, what would you do if us, would you be to look at March? The reason being is that is when UNM has its schedule available, a schedule that we are going to advocate to be better for our students. And we always get our students scheduled for the upcoming semester well ahead of time. Again, another thing, that there are so many pieces, Board, that I can assist with your incoming school, things that you wouldn't even suspect are needed. But because I've been there, there's a lot involved.
I appreciate it, I don't, you know, I don't want to discount your experience or, or insight at all in this matter, and that, that's not the point here. And, you know, don't, don't, don't rush it. If it isn't going to work for the fall, you know, this was for 2018, 2019, don't rush it. Let's see a complete, fully baked plan that is going to move forward and be an equitable solution going forward, so we don't have to come back every, you know, six months and say, oh, please, oh, please, we're doing, you know, I mean, let's just have something where it's real easy and addresses our concerns and move forward.
The concerns I'm hearing are transportation and possibly food service. Is that equity? Opportunity. That's, that's the overall. The equity is coming down from the top, which I very much appreciate. But, yeah, that equity thing is, that's a sensitive issue for me. I really had a hard time hearing what you reported about equity.
It wasn't, it wasn't a jab at you or anything else, it's just the way that it is. It's not just you, it happened before.
Right, it's a conversation that's been going on.
The school started with forty-five percent, now it's down to thirty-five percent.
It's coming up, and it's going to go.
You've only been there three years.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, we don't have any other further, uh, business? We don't have any other further business, do I have a motion to adjourn? Joe?
Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.